Good morning, welcome to the regular session of Board Supervisors for November 28th. Roll call please.
Brandt.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Kurtenbach.
Here.
Paul.
Here. Please join in the moment of silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stand and be grateful to join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda received and proposed or amended?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item two, public comments, this is time reserved for anyone to speak on an item that is not on this morning's agenda, either in the room or online. Seeing none, we'll move to item three, claims and payments. Is a resolution that the Board Supervisors approve expenditures that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims?
So, second.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill paid today is $296,753.80. And out of that, the Sheriff's Statuary Fund, we are paying $3,135.80. And there's actually nothing really large or unusual today, so everything appears to be in order.
Roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Item four, received project updates from Department of Henson Electric.
Good morning, Board. Kathy DeKloos, engineer. Brief update on our contract work. Our contractor is continuing to work on the Donald Street Bridge. That road carries about 1,400 cars a day. It's east of Elbun Road, between Elbun Road and Raymond Road. The contractors continuing to work on that. We are hopeful that they get that road back open by Thanksgiving, by late next week. Another work, our crews removed very large log jam under the Cedar Bridge over the Cedar River on Brandon Road. So they've been taking care of that, as well as some other miscellaneous trees out and about the county. And we are getting the last of the plows on the motor rangers. Can I answer any questions about roads today?
Okay, I was gonna say, on the Donald Street Bridge, this question just gave me. Did the weight limit on that change from, or will it be different than what it was before?
No. No, it, that part does not change. I can, if you have any more specifics about that, I can get back to you on that.
No, no, that's fine, that's scary.
Nope, that is remaining the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Board. Caitlin, I'm with the Public Health. I just wanted to bring to your attention, in case you didn't see it, my note about the opioid settlement fund scoring and the potential conflict with the state of Iowa application deadline. So, sent an email last week for the scoring of the applications for the opioid settlement funds. We're asking for the Board to complete your scoring by Tuesday, November 25th, so we can get it on the agenda for the December 2nd meeting. However, if we want to notify applicants before the deadline that the state of Iowa has posed, we're asking for the Board to score a little bit earlier than you originally agreed to on Wednes, by Wednesday, November 19th, and we're going to get it on the November 25th Board meeting. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and make sure that you saw it. You have any questions for any of us? We do have one reviewed so far, right, Michelle? Just, of course, Schwartz. That one's done?
Yep.
And so?
Yeah, I can just say it, it's a lot quicker than the community service ones. It's a lot quicker. I think we could, I think we could be able to get it done for next week.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder, Caitlin.
Yeah.
So thanks for the reminder.
Good morning, Board. Gabby Duett, Marketing Coordinator. Just letting you know that this will be our second annual snowplow naming contest. We're going to launch it later this week. Met with the Roads Department yesterday. We're going to have public submissions open for a week, starting November 19th through the 25th. And then, public voting will open on December 8th, with the winners announced December 16th. So we're looking to name three more snowplows, right, Kathy?
Right.
And just kind of chip away at them until they all have good names, so. I don't think, any questions about that? Okay? Great, thank you.
All right, do we have any others in the room or online? Seeing none, we'll move to the amended approval for the November 12th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a hearing at 9:05 for the rezoned ordinance number 77-301, Lance Terrell. Item seven, is a consent agenda. The items listed below will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the Board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight, resolution that the contract with Northeast Iowa Food Bank for the provision of emergency food pantry services of Black Hawk County be approved and direct the chairs issued, sorry, decide, say. Good for motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Um, yeah, first, the pot bar pray there, Northeast Iowa Food Bank. Thank you for bringing this up. So, the past two weeks, actually the past six weeks since the government shut down, our numbers have been increasing. The first two weeks of November compared to the first two weeks of October, we serve 50% more clients throughout our system. That included Black Hawk County. We're seeing a lot of people we haven't seen before. Or, we have people coming in that haven't been there in the last six months. The good news is that SNAP was funded Friday night. Our numbers are coming down a little bit, but they're still high, and they have been high since 2022. And so, anything the county can do to help facilitate additional funding to help us meet the need that's depleted our resources in the last two weeks, but also help ongoing would be appreciated. Last night, the city of Cedar Falls and the city of Waterloo each approved an additional $25,000 for us. So, you know, I will leave it up to you as to what you all decide to share with us, if anything. But know that food insecurity is still an issue in our community. The community has stepped up, the governor stepped up, and we met our matching within five days of that match going out. But it's still cost more money and more money to ensure that people have access to food. And it's really our responsibility to make sure that what government doesn't provide at the federal level, that we can come in as communities and fill that void and fill that need. So, with that, I will answer any additional questions that you have. But I do have two stats I would like to share. For those people that are on SNAP, about 40% of them are kids, and about another 40% are the elderly or disabled. And for every one meal food banks and food pantries distribute, SNAP provides nine meals. That shows the importance of that. And the other thing is the changes that were made in the big beautiful bill this summer went into effect November 1st and January 1st. The nutrition requirement goes into effect in the state of Iowa. So, you know, everybody has limited resources. We're here to help people in times of need. And I think our team at the food bank and all the food pantries in the community really stepped up to help make that difference. So, it just takes more money and more time. And I want to do a special shout out to my team. They worked tirelessly without complaints the last few weeks. They will do that all the time, but especially the last two weeks. So, anything the county can do to help support us would be appreciated.
Barbara, I want to say, you know, thank you for facilitating the conversation after our last board meeting. Supervisor Schwartz and I were on a call with the mayors of, well, the mayor of Waterloo and a city council member from Cedar Falls to talk about how we can get to a point where we're not only leveraging public dollars, but how can we challenge the private sector to do some match? Very similar to what the state did. And so, at that point, right, the conversation was around this idea of, you know, cities of Waterloo and Cedar Falls coming in for $25,000, the county coming in for at least 50, for this goal to get to $100,000. And so, really appreciate, you know, you all's commitment to this. And really excited about the idea of, we talked about, we spent 2,000-plus hours on our strategic planning, on talking about our core values. And for this to be one of those opportunities, I think, for collaboration, to really be, really be done in a, in a very forward-thinking and community-minded way, is, I think it's a great opportunity for us to show that this can be done. I don't know that we've always worked well with, you know, between counties and cities, there's, you know, there tends to be some lines drawn every once in a while. But this does feel like one of those opportunities for us to do the right thing, and to do it as a collective with the public sector making this sort of challenge to the private sector to match those dollars, I think is, it's just a, it's a good opportunity for us. I wanted to say thanks for facilitating the conversation and, yeah, to open it up to other board members.
Yeah. As I said, you know, last week, when people are living in poverty, or living on the edge, something like losing SNAP for six weeks has a ripple effect. That means that they had to spend more money on food, and so maybe they were late on this bill, now they've got a late fee payment. Or maybe they took out a predatory payday loan that they're going to be stuck in for six months or a year, and the average is going to go in those awful, awful loans. And so, the need's going to be ongoing for a while, even though SNAP has been restored. And the need has already been really high for the last number of years. First, first stimulated by the pandemic, and then the resulting inflation, and now tariffs, and now new restrictions going into SNAP in October, and further restrictions starting from the state in January. I'd like to see us in at an additional $100,000 on top of the $50,000 we budgeted annually, if we can get there, but I'm, you know, I'd like to see what others are supportive of.
So, you mean, what you're asking is really in addition to the 50 that we give now?
Yeah.
To do an additional 100, so what, you have other questions?
Yeah.
Barb, where do you guys, what's the intent with the money?
Um, the money will be used for us to access additional food, as well as, so, a lot of our food is donated, but we still have the cost to transport it and store it, so some of it goes for that. We're picking up at all the grocery stores every day, so some of it goes to help do that. But then, there are items that we can't always get donated, like protein, and some of it will be used for that. It'll be used to, not just protein, but other nutritious foods. We can leverage food with our partnership with Feeding America, working with other food banks around the country, as well as, you know, helping our pantries, the additional pantries we serve in Black Hawk County as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, it will be, it won't be just one program, it will be spread throughout the county.
Got you, thank you.
Because we have, you know, we have eight programs, four of them focus on kids, with our after-school meal programs, our summer feeding, our backpack program, and our school market program. But then also through senior programs, the pantry is the biggest, obviously, but then all the other pantries that are throughout the community, like the Food Nook at, or the Methodist Church in Waterloo, and St. Luke's Episcopal in Nazareth has one, so we'll be working with them, as well as the college pantries.
Barb, what's the process of trying to get matching funds?
Well, if this is approved today, we will set, we're sending a press release out front, you know, with a quote from each of the, like, from Tavis and Mayor Hart and Mayor Lattick. And then, we will challenge the community, and then we'll track that internally of what comes in. We've had some initial talks with some places already, just no commit, a few commitments, but not, not completely. But there will be a direct appeal to the community.
So it is viewed as they did it last night, I think, in preparation maybe for what we were planning to do today?
Correct, yeah, Waterloo and Zierball both approved $25,000 last night. When we, when we, Barb, after the call, sent an email outlining a goal to get to 100,000, sort of in keeping with what other counties, but, you know, there's, counties have come in, what seems a little higher than individual cities. At least amongst the major.
I mean, the ones I know about are Polk County gave a million dollars. Lynn County gave 80, plus the city of Cedar Rapids also gave 25,000. I don't know about any others, those are the ones that I've heard about.
So, yeah, so, sort of going off the idea of trying to get to 100,000, recognizing there are still additional needs for the food bank as well. That, you know, we've got our ongoing contribution, and they're going to be entering some capital campaigns for some efforts in the coming months, and so, the thought was to get to $100,000, cities taking the portion and county taking half.
Third, third, the third didn't work.
I don't know if, I don't know if it was even pitched.
I don't even, yeah.
Yeah.
I just figured the county was bigger. I live in this county, so.
Okay, no, there's all kinds of reasons for that.
What's the distribution area for Polk County?
Huh?
What's the distribution, or the reason that Polk County serves, as compared with us?
So, it's the Food Bank of Iowa. I, I don't know what the Food Bank of Iowa got and what pantries got. I don't know how it was distributed, and I don't even know.
What about county-wise, like, how many counties?
Oh.
Like, because you guys are based out of Moore and Lewis?
Yeah, so, oh, so, the food bank, what their distribution. They actually have 55 counties. The Polk County money, though, is my understanding, will stay in Polk County, just like Black Hawk County's money will stay for the residents of Black Hawk County. So, yeah.
And I would add.
Sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking.
I'd add that, in frankly, maybe even surprising fashion, both chambers passed the measure unanimously.
Yes.
Which doesn't seem to happen a whole lot these days. And so I think that, that speaks volumes. Of course, I would love to see us, in the same fashion, speak as one, as all public sectors coming in and saying that this issue isn't going to respond.
Oh, yeah, and it is, thank you.
Yeah.
Two concerns I'm thinking of, and one leads to the second. First of all, these are on budgeted dollars we're talking about. The second part is, this may not be the only time. We may be seeing this problem again in January, because this.
Actually, no, because the USDA appropriations bill was passed when they passed the continuing resolution. So USDA and SNAP is funded through September 30th.
How about after January? This funded through September 30th of 2016.
Right, for the whole, yes, for the whole fiscal year. That doesn't mean we aren't going to see it next year.
Yeah, that's.
I can't control. I wish I could.
And one of these, maybe on budgeted dollars, you know, we have strong reserves that are for an emergency, and it's not just an emergency within county operations, this is an emergency for our constituents and for the people that we serve. And so I think it's an appropriate use.
Yeah, and I think probably the word appropriate use is probably not the problem, but it is. I much appreciate, like, say, what you're saying as far as, like, an awareness of where our reserves are going to be. I think we'll find that out in the next month or so, and wanting to contribute and be there for these kinds of projects when we can. And to me, that's why it's always been important to keep a certain level of reserves and not take them down too far, so that we can do things like this when the needs arise, kind of like disasters and other misfortunate things that come upon us. I am glad very much that the three of us maybe working together on something is a step in the right direction of doing it. I realize they have more funding availability to them than we do. We have reserves, I think they were looking at hotel motel tax and revenue from those things too, where everybody looks. But it's still just that we look to ourselves then to find things that we can do and what we can do, so. I appreciate all the hard and effort to kind of get the three of us together, in that sense too.
Yeah, Waterloo's came out of the hotel motel tax, and Cedar Falls came out of their reserves.
Their reserves.
I believe.
Thank you.
Knowing that there's probably additional asks coming, and we are contributing currently, I'm comfortable with the 50,000. That's where I'm probably most comfortable, I feel like we can build consensus around that 50,000. Let me take it. I'm sure, yes?
I'd make a motion for 50.
Seconded.
Do I need to second it, since we already just made a motion on the resolution?
Yeah, you made a motion on it.
The, for the amount, yeah, to move forward the contract, but I think we announced that the contract, and I thought it would be important to state that this is a different contract, so Michelle will take care of that, I'm sure, but to not just look like it was the 50,000, that we typically would do, so.
So the original motion didn't have an amount?
Yeah, the original motion didn't have an amount.
I think Justin made the motion and I seconded that, so. Okay.
I'll.
I can just add that.
Okay.
As a separate motion.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second for a contract with Northeast Iowa Food Bank for the provision of emergency food pantry services in the amount of $50,000. We've got a motion and a second, unless there's further discussion. Roll call.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Um, just one more thing, our annual holiday distribution is next week. We're planning on serving between 4,000 and 5,000 families in a drive-through style around the food bank. So if any of you would like to come and volunteer, just let me know, and we'll get you in on the shift, so.
What days are those?
Uh, Tuesday, or Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday till noon. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Item 9A, a hearing on proposed rezoned ordinance number 77-301, Lance Terrell. We have a motion to receive and place on file approved publication and tell us of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a motion to waive the first reading, as notice was published on November 11th, 2025, in 1824, according to requirements of the Code of Iowa. The publication was approved on the request submitted by Lance Terrell to rezone .63 acres of land from C Commercial District to RM Residential Multi, multiple district for the purpose of converting a church to a residential dwelling located at 9801 Burnham.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a motion to close the hearing, as all written comments are received and filed. So moved.
Second.
Do we have any thing received?
No written comments.
All right.
Good morning, Board. Joseph Galman, zoning administrator. So this request, is rather a unique request. It's one of the, I believe this is believed to be the second oldest church in Black Hawk County. Currently, it is owned C Commercial District. It was originally planned, the last owner was planning on having it be an event center. There was a condition that it could only be used for that. The applicant is currently planning on converting it to a residential unit and then using it as a short-term rental property. The Planning and Zone Commission did recommend approval unanimously. I do want to point out, the cemetery just to the south is owned by the applicant, but that is not part of this rezoned request. That will stay as own AL. Do you have any questions for me or the applicant?
This one, I got one.
Yeah.
When you say short-term rental property, what do you mean by that?
So, short-term rental, that's like Airbnb, Furbo, that sort of property.
And there were stipulations put in for, as you said, to make, if there were changes made, or requested by the applicant. If they wanted to change anything for the property, they had to come back to the group, right? Or to the PMZ committee, or to the PMZ.
Uh, I mean, it depends on what changes with it, you know, if it does get rezoned, it can be used for any residential purpose. But if they wanted to use it for, like, a different business purpose, they might have to come in.
I think it's a good repurposing of a small little historic church.
Well, it's really just the sewer system, wasn't it, that was kind of causing the issue?
Yeah, and they've been working with a company to figure that out.
It looks a lot better with a lot of the trees gone, if you're building it well, so.
You have any other questions? Entertained a motion to, we've got a motion and a second to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board Supervisors to consider vote and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior readings.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. So this is a resolution as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution of the ordinance amending, ordinance number 36, as amended, Black Hawk County Iowa Agriculture Preservation zoning ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1989, by adding subsection number 301 in section 6B, rezoning certain property as described on the above request submitted by Lance Terrell, as it considered the same for adoption and if adopted, known as ordinance number 77-301.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Thank you. 9B, resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Rory Given, facilities director be approved and direct secured as higher percent to purchase a 2026 Dodge Ram 2500 in the amount of $42,654 from Dan Derry Motors in Martinville, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Good morning, Board. Rory Given, facilities director. We did receive four bids for this pickup. Dan Derry Motor Company came in low bid at $42,654. The next bid up was $48,490.
What, what do we have budgeted for this?
Well, we had 50,000 budgeted for this. And this is just part of our ongoing change out of our fleet and our five-year plan.
Roll call please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. We have a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for public hearing, a bid opening to be held at 9:07 on December 9th, 2025, in Boardroom 201 in Black Hawk County Courthouse, 316 East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed Washburn Road Bridge Repairs Project, LFM-3038-7X-07 in Black Hawk County.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Sorry.
Good morning, again, Board. Just a few comments about this project. This is to do some repairs on a large bridge, the largest bridge in the county, over the Cedar River on Washburn Road. Some recent inspections have been done by underwater divers, according to federal regulations, and they found that the piers, four of, four of the six piers do need some repairs, sensitive repairs, so we're putting together this project in order to address this work, and probably work will be through much of next year. So I recommend approval, this will, in order, this will provide for us to send out the plans and specifications now, with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will move to item 9B, motion to modify the regular operating hours for Black Hawk County offices on Christmas Eve to align with the state of Iowa. So moved.
Yeah, second.
All right. I had brought it up, just because I. All right, uh, I had brought it up uh just because I knew it was discussed at um department head meeting and and just after talking with a couple of folks, I think we needed to provide some level of clarity uh as to what our expectation is here. The state of Iowa is is, from my understanding, closing uh all day uh on Christmas Eve and so uh at least to get the the ball rolling here, um, I added the uh added the item to the agenda to mirror uh the state. I think it is a good opportunity for us to provide some good benefit uh to the folks that that work here uh over the uh the holiday break. Relatively little. There's going to be some some staff management and time management, uh various projects, but I I felt comfortable uh with aligning with the state, the courthouse, and then sort of all sort of in the same spot throughout all the departments versus some departments having some hours, some other departments having other hours. That feels very clunky to me. I think to communicate to the public, it makes the most sense to to align, but certainly open the discussion.
Well, the only that when you said align, I guess my question was going to be, does the states open the day after Christmas?
But we've already, that one is a little different from my understanding because we've already adopted that calendar. Is that correct?
So just to kind of circle back, this started kind of a year ago when each December H R brings forward the holidays for the board to approve. Typically in the contracts um that we set the holidays and um at the time didn't realize that when Christmas Eve falls like on a Wednesday, it's been our policy that we take off Christmas Day and the day after Christmas. And um and actually I was corrected by a county employee who's been here a while and he said, yeah, no, you actually, we are working Christmas Eve and this happened. I think in two thousand and fourteen was the last time. So um that's kind of where this started and then I did have some conversations uh with a few board members, with a couple elected offices, just to make sure that we don't have kind of what happened in two thousand and fourteen where we had some elected offices closing at noon while other offices that are not elected um but under the board's uh discretion uh be open for the rest of the day. So that's how this started and then, of course, we do kind of look at what the state does. Um, we try to be consistent with them, but they are open on the twenty-sixth and we technically are closed on the twenty-sixth. Uh, they are also closed on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We are open. So there's some of that that exists. Uh, I don't believe they recognize Juneteenth due, so that does come up from time to time, but um.
So we'll be open the twenty-sixth, though?
No.
Oh, okay, that's right. Is it closed too? So it's Thursday, Friday?
We could look at changing the policy going forward. I think the, you know, generally it uh it just said that's what the policy said and that's what was approved, so people already planned on being off Thursday, Friday and then working Christmas Eve, or it's going to be possibly like a skeleton group um where most people may take that day off for Christmas Eve and you might just have the department head there working or supervisor. And elected offices, those individuals may just take their time off um to be closed and then the elected official can just close their office that day, so.
I have a fairness issue with this. The one, understand we're basically granting an extra paid holiday with this process. But we also have several departments that are twenty-four seven and those folks won't be getting anything as far as that as well. So I don't know what would be the best interest in in trying to be fair with them as well. If it's a matter of granting them another eight hours P T O that have to work within the twenty-fourth. Guess I'll look at some thoughts where the board stands in that and remark a nation from as far as how we'd be fair to them as well.
Yeah, I that and that was what was kind of concerning me, knowing we were coming up to the time when we needed to make some decision about going forward on this, but that there was maybe more to consider. Um, at least as as it got to be of how if we were doing a paid or unpaid, you know, people taking have been taking P T O typically that have been leaving on that holiday and going early or taking the day off or using it in their vacation week. So there was some of that consideration also that I was hoping we'd have some discussion on, but like I say, time being and not understanding where we'd be your fault in that. But and but and also and that there were other options that we could do without just doing it. I guess we could just do it for this year only for now. If we want to do something like that, because quite honestly, that is where the governor weighs in on this. The state has just nine holidays. And the two that they gave this year, um, I think were ones like she's done in the last couple of years and I think she did something similar in COVID where she had some appreciation days and, you know, those were something I think maybe we talked about and never did, but I thought certainly um reasons to look at that, but I thought um we could do something like that where we have our holidays for now, but maybe examine them later at our policies or our benefits packages and how it compares to other counties and that type of thing. I was fine with like, everybody was kind of talking about taking off at noon or closing at noon for the offices and that looked like that was working for state as well, correct?
And what state offices were busy?
They're closed for the whole day, yeah. Um, but um they originally were just going to be closed to the public and they would still be open on Christmas Eve and then it turned into, they're just giving it paid time off day on the day before Thanksgiving and on Christmas Eve. So but yeah, we did also talk about closing at noon on Christmas Eve and that would just be then you pay straight time from noon for basically four hours um for the remainder.
Let's, I mean, it's no secret how much I love Christmas and the entire like holiday season. And I don't want to see people working on Christmas Eve that don't have to. Um, so I think we could take this action today and then figure out what we do. Because I'm also open to the folks um that that are going to have to work that day, you know, making that up to them as well, so that's.
And I should mention unit five, public safety, um, thank you, me.
I appreciate the thought on my my twenty-four seven staff. Um, it's going to cover us for Judy down at dispatch as well. So they're probably some of the better compensated people that we have within the county anyway, and I think when you go into this line of work, there's an understanding that you're going to be stuck working some holidays and that kind of stuff. So the ones that are working two holidays, which for us, we actually count the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for our twenty-four seven staff as holidays. They're getting double time and a half. I think, you know, they're good with that. I appreciate Richie throwing out maybe an extra day off or whatever, but that's a hundred people I'm giving an extra day off to and especially with my shortage, that ends up piling up and that ends up causing more over time and it's just kind of as a steamroller effect. As far as my bargaining, one, people go on the clerical staff. I'm all for kicking them out at noon. Um, I mentioned this in department heads meeting, but over the course of the year, all of our employees have probably given us at least four hours, whether it be coming in a little early, staying late, taking a call at home, working through lunch. I would be all for letting them take off on noon without having to burn any P T O, kind of give them, there's a day to give them back a few hours. I think Christmas Eve is definitely that day, but um as far as the twenty-four seven staff goes, again, I appreciate you thinking of them, but I think they kind of understand that and that essential role we saw during COVID. Most everybody else stayed home. My guys and I all kept coming to work and doing everything and that's just what we do.
And my and my point in bringing this was really just sort of forced the conversation. Um, I knew that department heads were sort of getting to a point where they needed to approve P T O or if they approved P T O and then reacted, then they have, there's like a whole nother shuffle of stuff and so it just made sense to bring the item to the agenda. Um, I I was I'm comfortable either way, if it's all day, if it's a half day. So I just figured I'd I'd throw my max comfort out and then what the board would look at.
Well, and it's the ugly part of looking at holidays, like you mentioned, Chris, that when there is a cost to it and when we talk about where that funding comes from, it'll come from reserves, obviously, in something unplanned or unbudgeted. But um certainly, uh, if for all the work everyone's been doing the last couple of years, I said I'd love them to have a month off. And and that and I don't mean that, just to throw out a number, I think everybody's worked so hard, just to give a day even doesn't seem appreciative enough, but if there's you know, something we can do that's similar, it's not a guaranteed. I I'm us do more discussion of those options as well, closing at noon um or all day. I just get more discussion is always better, I think, just to know when you're walking in. I know we have an ask and I thought rightly so, because it is the ugly part of giving time off, of saying, what does that cost? And I I wouldn't mind having an idea, but it's like not.
But look, we're not spending cash on it. Like, that's, that's not what this is.
It's all part of it. It's all part of it. What we're doing, though, the cost to, I mean, as far as the day.
Sorry, you just mentioned reserves. This isn't.
No, I mean, our reserves is another area of of what we're looking at, something unbudgeted, uh unplanned for.
Well, see, that's that was my concern. First part was basically giving another holiday is already covered. And we're not putting extra dollars out there just receiving a day off, but already paid. That that money's already accounted for. It would be the other staff if we're granting P T O on top.
The fairness, no, I get what you're meaning, the people that are working twenty-four seven or.
That would be additional cost, but this is actually already covered as far as the budget. This is just, there aren't budgets to be paid that day.
Would mention, I would just, the state called it, you know, initial P T O day. When you start calling it holiday, then you do run into, you know, a little bit with, and I appreciate Sheriff Neff coming up here because, yes, the sheriff and dispatch, they are well compensated with holidays. Uh, if, I don't quite remember, but you can earn a casual holiday. You get double time. You work and it gets, works out pretty well in their favor, much more than most other departments who you get eight hours for that holiday, right? So uh this is really the operations of that day. Do you close at noon or do you just close operations? To and and when we've done that in the past, whether we had it, well, we had a bomb spread situation, right, or like COVID, it was, we were closing, we're, that means you just, people's continuity have paid as in like straight time. Um, so that's, it's, I just want to kind of clarify that between the holiday, recognizing it as an actual holiday, has at least for some contracts, additional funds. And yes, an additional P T O day, but uh they do get quite a bit with their holiday within their contract, more than most of the other unions. But this would just be specifically about the operations or I would, we would recommend, that's when I talked with our um employment law attorney. They said if you were to do it like an actual holiday or either, you know, you're just going to have a quick memo with the union, say this is a one-time thing that we're doing or if it's additional P T O one-time thing that we're doing. Uh, but if you truly just close operations or change operations the day that you just pay individuals because you just, as the board elected to close, those operations at the courthouse at Pine Crest, at Conservation, at Rhodes, things like that. Which wouldn't ever apply to twenty-four seven. I think that's what Sheriff Neff is just trying to.
Yeah, I I think it makes sense to just close operations for the whole day. I mean, it's not, if we're forcing people to come in either a half day or the whole day, it's not going to be a productive day. As productive as most days, um, because it will be a skeleton group because people won't be coming in, individual department heads, their elected officials can close their office anyways. It's not going to be a day that the public is coming in a lot, um, because it's a, it's a time for people to be with family, friends and loved ones and this just happens to be a year that that it falls like what every eleven years or so, the calendar works out that um it ends up with our current system that Christmas Eve isn't off and this is just to correct this, if we have to do that every eleven years so that people can spend time with their family and and loved ones, then then let's do it.
And we can certainly look at that policy. Again, I think that wouldn't be a bad thing for us to look at after this, just because the the last time it happened predates me and I all well, I think a few of us, um, but yeah, that was the intent was just to, with new leadership, with new elected officials, let's try to make it consistent at the courthouse. Um, it'd be nice to align it perfectly with the state, but we do have some times where we don't just because there is a difference in holidays at times. Um, and we see we'll have that coming up Wednesday before Thanksgiving, like I said, Juneteenth, and then the twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas, where we'll be open for the state will be operating, so. I appreciate everybody's, I didn't mean to open a can of worms.
No.
It was kind of.
I mean, it's been open for a couple of months, right? Like, this has been on, like, this has been on the radar for a little while.
And it, yeah, and I brought it, I mean, January, I think, Chris and Schwartz and I talked a little bit back then, the first holidays were approved and it's something that we can now take a look at that policy and just say, okay, how do we want this to go going forward? Um, because we could mirror unit five and just say it's always going to be Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. We don't have to worry about that Friday. You know, we could talk about that um in the policy, but.
That's why I want to be pretty careful and not mirror the state too off too much because they just have the nine holidays and actually we have a
More.
Better benefit package.
I think we're at eleven and have to double check. We have a floating personal holiday. That's just for, it used to be called the birthday holiday. Have to, it's, I think it's eleven. I don't know if it's twelve. Maybe it's twelve. Anybody know?
But they're talking about once every ten years or whatever.
Eleven.
Maybe it is something to look at for yearly if it is closing down at noon or whatever to.
Well, there's two parts to it. There's closing the courthouse that day and then there's how we compensate the employees because we're disrupting their normal work. So if we're here grant, closing, that means are we granting that they'd be covered under P an additional P T O a day? So they're being paid.
That's my good.
What's your discussion?
So there's two parts to it. We're closing the courthouse.
Yes.
That's what this is, but it's how we compensate employees because we're disrupting their normal work day.
Well, they would just get paid. If you close, so when we had, example, the bomb threat and it was like, we're closing at noon. Everybody just continued to get paid because we's, so it was like straight time. It was just because we closed the operations. I think that's what you're getting at, right, Chris?
Right, yeah, there's how are you compensating employees if you're closing?
So.
You're paying them.
I think if you close.
That's just regular, it's regular pay, regular straight rate.
If you guys close the courthouse on a day that's supposed to be working, we would have to pay them, pay individuals that would have been normally working. Like, you can't force them, I don't think, to use P T O. I don't think, and we can't not pay them, uh, because you're right, you, we are.
You're disrupting their normal work.
Yeah, you're, you're keeping them from working.
Yes.
So I think we're.
But the motion only starts about closing for the day.
Okay.
Well, you mean our motion, yeah, and and we were just discussing kind of a, like, at that point, yeah.
And you could amend it.
Because it's my understanding that when we close, they are paid for their workday.
When we close.
When we close, when we close the courthouse,
Right.
they are paid for their workday.
Yeah.
I think that's specifically, I think it needs to be more spelled out, but that's what's taking place.
They could be amended to say that that whole receipt paid for the day, um, but it wouldn't be paid for, yeah. And I could look into that a little bit more, but that's been my understanding. We just, that was past practice when one day, um, it was a couple of years ago, we had to vacate the courthouse and then it was like, you know what? We're just going to close.
Yeah, I was chair at the time and I said, I'm not making people go back in the courthouse today after a bomb threat.
Yeah.
Um, and when we sent people, you know, home during the the first part of the endemic, now it's just we were closing the operations here. Uh, what else? And that's.
Yep, and they just continued to get paid as they would if they were working. Um, and then, uh, I know, like, weather always comes up, that's why we try to with weather, we don't, I'm opening another camera here, but that's a whole other thing, but it the only time someone would be paid for weather is if you all said, we are closing operations, kind of like schools, you know, we're not opening till ten A M, we're closing at two, and then we would say, okay, that's because you, you're shutting the operations down, which people would be working for, so you have to pay them, so. And that's fairly standard, is my understanding. Of compensation.
So we've got the motion. Uh, we've got a motion and a second. You want to add?
I just wanted to note that that means the employees will be paid for the, to regular pay, regular.
Yeah, just clarity.
Yes. Hey, um, anybody listening out there, I guess I would just like to, you know, thinking about, so Amanda, when you and I talked about this a little while back, I was not aware, this is my fault, so I, I don't want to seem like I'm going back on what I initially told you, but I wasn't aware that that was going to be in the middle of the week. So I should have probably looked at the calendar at that time confirm what those dates are going to be. And how much business historically, would we have any way to look at how much business is done on Christmas Eve when we've been open?
The last time would be two thousand and fourteen, I think, was the last time. I'd have to go back then and we had the elected officials, the T J, who type of the department head, Sandy, Rita, the treasurer, so the recorder, the treasurer, the assessor said, we're closing at noon. And um generally what they've done is they've, people would, in those offices, take P T O, which we appreciated, or take vacation. Um, or if you didn't have vacation, then you would, if you didn't have, if you were a new hire, it would just be unpaid. But if one person wanted to work, we always, you know, that one per, one supervisor would have to stay and they would remain open, but those offices, generally, they've talked about, if anyone's going to come to the courthouse to see anyone, it's going to be likely the treasurer. But, um, those offices, generally, they've talked about, if anyone's gonna come to the courthouse to see anyone, it's gonna be likely the treasurer, likely the recorder, assessor, so they're not probably coming to IT, or HR, or, you know, Rhodes, I don't know. I hear laughing, so.
They were all asked at the department head meeting this last one too, and they all confirmed that it's relatively dead during that time, as our customers, so.
Yeah, so it was very limited, I guess, business activity, there is very few people coming in, especially, I mean, if they did, maybe in the morning, but they'd probably be the best ones to ask, cause they were here during that time, and I think they said, yeah, they maybe had like two people working, and they just said, we're closed, and everyone else could take the day, the day off, so, um, that's how that was.
No, more important to probably get a notice out on the doors as soon as possible.
That's what I was gonna say, is like aggressive, uh, camp, notice campaign. The only, the only other thing I was gonna say, um, I would like to see like the twenty-four seven crews, I'd like to see something from them, because there's no amount of monetary compensation that makes working graveyard shift worth it. In my, you know, that's coming from a guy who's worked a dozen years of my life, and it, it does kinda suck, you know, where you just don't get to enjoy the holiday, even if you get paid time and a half, or, or whatever it is. So if there was room for additional comp accrual or something, in my, my little fantasy land, that's, that's what I would like to see, but, but perhaps that, uh, complicates things even more so, so.
Just willing to probably, you want that ironed out, and we wanna make sure, obviously include Nate, or Sheriff Neff, and Judy Flores of Dispatch, and just kinda.
I mean, the, the thing on that is for, for our twenty-four seven staff, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth are the holidays, the bargaining Unit Five does a difference. So they're already at their double time and a half, so if you did anything, you would almost have to add it to the twenty.
You said double time?
Yeah, our, you take a double time and a half for working the holidays.
Okay.
And it, like I said, it legitimately is twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, so if you did anything, you'd have to compensate them for working the twenty-sixth, if you're trying to make things even in some world, but, again, I, I think we recognize that that's kind of part of, that's what we signed up for.
And anyone who doesn't get double time and a half earns a holiday, a casual holiday to use at their discretion.
Take a little.
That's it, they don't get the double, because they're not.
If their scheduled payout falls on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, they'll earn a casual holiday during, within the next year, so.
And those.
If you add it to twenty-sixth or something, then you've gotta try and add something in for those people, and it, it just opens up a whole.
And those are paid out, those aren't rate, those are.
Yeah, they, they, it's one year.
So, Amanda, this is Judy, um, and I understand what the sheriff is saying, if the board decided to compensate the twenty-four seven, I mean, the only thing that I would think could happen is maybe adding eight hours of comp time to their bank, or an extra casual day, but I don't know how complicated that would be, I get that they get paid double time and a half, but I also understand what Justin is saying as well. So that's just my take on it.
I, I think it's.
For future discussions.
Well, different holidays would flip too, cause twenty, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is different, there's, there's times where they're getting more of a benefit than the people working on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth are holiday, be the same thing once every seven years. Well, yeah, I guess in reality, nothing's gonna be fair, that is what it is, so.
Such is life.
Yeah, I agree.
Indeed, or I'm sorry, I made it all complicated, as usual.
No, that's, no, no.
No, no, she did, oh.
All right, so we've got a motion in a second, um, with the clarification that folks will, in the courthouse will receive, um, regular pay.
And that'll be Pine Crest.
Call question.
Yeah.
That'd be a paid holiday.
Basically, I need non twenty-fourth, so, yeah. The regular operations of the county offices.
Oh, I know, for this year.
For this year.
Since we didn't have that state either, okay.
Right. Got a motion in a second? This is a motion. You wanna do a roll call, let's do a roll call.
Just a bit.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Shorts.
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Hurtin' Pack?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
That is for the day, right?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, we'll get information out.
Might as well up there.
Yeah, might as well next.
All right, I'm ninety, discussion update on action planning, priorities one through four.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna give a quick brief update, oh. Okay, um, so this was recommended from strategic planning that, uh, we, that the, uh, champions of the top four priorities that are, um, being termed as the action planning, uh, groups, I give an update to the board like once a quarter, so this is our first update. Um, before we get going, just wanted to revisit our mission, cultivating a diverse community that embraces our unique assets, positioning our county as a thriving center for all to live, work, and succeed. Again, we have our core values of collaboration, accountability, service, efficiency, fiscal response, financial responsibility, innovation, and transparency. And then here were the top priorities in order of resource allocations established by the board of supervisors. Um, this was again done throughout the last year, um, engaging, uh, with the department heads and staff to establish our vision, mission, core values, and the top priorities. Today, you're gonna hear updates on, uh, support mental health needs, professional development and training, culture of accountability, support economic development, and then improve safety, security of public facilities and systems, and turn it over to Caitlin.
Morning Board, I'm gonna give a quick update on the support mental health needs, um, critical objective goal, I had to remember what cog meant real quick, channelize strategic planning lingo. Um, so the co-champs for this are myself and Supervisor Braya. Uh, team members for this priority, um, include the following, so in addition to the two co-champs, we have Lisa Sestrehan from Public Health, Colleen Shipper, our general assistance coordinator, Cherry, Cherry Gollmeyer, uh, with Human Resources, Jackie Bailey, mental health advocate, Jessica Rousch in the jail, the social community jail, Carla Altenbaum, the, with Sheriff's Department, and Heather Jackson Briggs with the County Attorney's Office. So our team has had three meetings, we just had our third meeting last Friday, the Verifon Friday afternoon session. Um, we did spend about a meeting and a half working on clarifying the goal, because the scope of support mental health needs is pretty large. We had a lot of discussion about what the county's role in supporting mental health needs would be for the purpose of moving this, um, critical objective goal forward. Um, so to do that, we talked about underutilized resources in terms of mental health, um, services, and gaps in mental health services, and that has helped us kind of clarify what the county's role in, um, mental health needs is. And so far, we have identified our top two barriers, remember from the action planning process, there's brainstorming and organizing and prioritizing of ideas around the barriers that are, that are contributing to why that critical objective goal has not been solved yet. So we have, um, identified those top two, and we've started to brainstorm potential solutions for the first barrier. Um, so we're cartwading through that process. Any questions for me on that? Okay, well, I'm gonna hand it over, I think, to Dana.
Okay, so the second priority, um, is professional development and training, and then culture of accountability. Uh, the co-champs are myself and our county auditor, Karen Showalter. I just wanna give you an overview of the team members on our action planning team, so, uh, we also have Ty Burkhardt, Deputy Director of Public Health, Griffin Cabalca, roadside biologist, Trevor Davis, uh, conservation ranger two, Judy Flores, uh, consolidated communications director, Anna App of HR, uh, Megan Murphy, who's here today, uh, Treasurer's Office, and then Al Yu, our IT Director. Okay, um, similar to what Caitlin expressed, for her top priority is that we've had a few meetings, we've had four action planning meetings so far. Uh, we've been meeting about every other week, has been our cadence, um, and, uh, during that time, we did clarify that accountability and professional, professional development and training are really kind of two separate focuses, even though it's under one priority. Um, and part of that came from feedback, uh, we did an exercise where, uh, the team went out and talked to, um, at least two staff members or coworkers or, um, department heads, and asked, you know, what should we start doing, stop doing, or continue doing for each of those? So that kinda helped to clarify that, yes, those are two different things. From there, uh, we did brainstorm a number of barriers to accountability, and, uh, did some prioritizations as to what the team felt ranked the highest as the top two barriers, and then we repeated that same process for professional development and training. So we are kinda treating these as two separate areas within that, um, priority. Our most recent meeting, uh, we did start brainstorming and collecting ideas on solutions that are aimed at the top barriers for each, for accountability and professional development training, and we are thinking that's gonna take us a little bit more time, um, than it did to get through the barriers portion of this process. And so, uh, our next meeting likely won't be until after the Thanksgiving holiday, um, and we may have these, you know, brainstorming and trying to think about solutions for possibly a couple of meetings, but. Any questions on our progress so far?
On the accountability barriers, yes, what are those?
Sure, so, uh, there was a number of them, I believe the one that came up was, do we set clear expectations? Do people know clear expectations are to be accountable to? And then the next one was that there is this maybe fear to overcome of like, or some don't want to, I guess, approach accountability or don't know how to, because, um, maybe they're afraid of confrontation, and that could be peer-to-peer, that could be subordinate to a supervisor or supervisor dissubordinate, it's one of those things where I'd rather just, you know, sit under the rug, those two. So those were the two that ranked highest, um, but we did talk about, you know, what about, what tools are training out there for accountability's kind of this broad term, and can be, maybe seen differently depending on, um, what role you're in or your experiences, but, um, those were the top two. That, do we have clear expectations, we do, are we sharing them, making sure everybody understands those expectations? And then, um, back to just that overcoming that fear of approaching accountability.
I would maybe just, I'm not the part of this group, just throw out, I think too often, we look at accountability as a stick, but there is the carrot side, where we're talking about the positives, um, I, I think too often it's viewed as a sort of, the, the, the extension of discipline, um, in conflict, where I think there really is an opportunity to elevate good work and not just punitive, so.
Which was part of our discussion, setting that goal.
And that was generally when we asked people, when you hear accountability, generally you don't hear positive feedback. People almost always associate it with like, oh, well, they're not accountable to this, and so that was even seen in the feedback we collected in our homework, with the start, stop, and continue doing, it wasn't generally, you didn't see a lot of like, oh, I guess in that positive sense, so, but yes, um, thank you for bringing that up, and surprise for Mark, that's right, um, I know Ted in the train that we've been going through, and the next one we have coming up, well, we have coaching and then accountability, but it is that positive side of it as well, so hopefully we can have some solutions around that. But, and again, I think the fear comes from this idea that it's always negative, as opposed to, right? But that is where we are at, does that make sense that they are kinda two separate though, I mean, I know it's under one priority two, but, um, any questions on professional development training?
Yeah, what are, what are those barriers?
Well, we kind of said, so, one that came up was, are we even asking what people's goals are? And, um, when it comes to, and I would say that was more geared on professional development, um, you know, in, are people sharing those goals? Are we asking, how can we help meet your goals when it comes to professional development? And then there was the other side of, um, that was that we do have a wide range of training, we have such varied roles throughout the county, um, and, uh, do we have good visibility as to what kind of training, uh, certain roles need, or what kind of professional development would make sense? Money did come up, funding, uh, we have talked about things like, we don't have tuition reimbursement, uh, for example, and how that could kinda fit more into a professional development type segment, um, but, uh, those were kind of the main barriers that, um, that came up, so. Really getting people thinking about, what are your goals here for your, as you're continuing in your profession? And can we meet those, can we add to that, what are the resources to elevate your, um, professional?
And Ted spent extra time on that issue on our leadership class here last week or the week before, on setting goals.
Yes.
So that was, and I, I felt we got a good response from staff at that meeting when that was brought up, so. One actually told me is like, I've never been asked that before, so.
Yeah, that was part of the rigor section as to, you know, how, cause I think, and some of that was about, you know, you do have to set some of your own goals, even in your personal life, you know, what does that look like, and if you, um, wanted to live a good life, and you were kind of evaluating your health, your financial wellbeing, your career, family relationships, social networks, like, if there's an area that's not doing so well, what would you do? What goal would you have to move that up to be better? And, um, it's a lot like what we're doing here, is that, you know, you guys have set those priorities, and we're trying to come up with plans to move the needle forward. As you recall, accountability was the lowest rated, um, measure on GAPM, now that was our first survey that we did, and I believe we'll be having another survey on that, it'll be interesting to see if that comes out, um, again, but, um, yeah, so, have some room for improvement, but.
Thank you.
No, thank you, and next one is Kathy.
Uh, good morning, Board, I am one of the co-champs for the Supporting Economic Development Action Plan. My co-champ is Sherry Northrup, uh, other members of our team include PJ Coningsfeld, the assessor, Garth Goodrich, recorder, deputy recorder, Natalie Nunez is our, is on our team to help us with GIS, she's the GIS coordinator, Tim Jameson is the systems or the real tax, real estate tax manager, Lynda Layland, Board of Supervisors, and Tavis Hall, Board of Supervisors.
You get our sympathy already, I think, from everybody, you got two supervisors on there, so.
I think one of the strengths of our committee is that we are a diverse group of people, we do touch on a lot of different processes here in the county. Uh, we've been very collaborative with each other, getting to know each other, because we don't work with each other on a day-to-day basis, uh, much of the time, so that's been a very interesting and rewarding part of this, uh, team, is just getting to know people from different, uh, communities in the county. Uh, we've had two meetings, and we are meeting again for the third time tomorrow. Uh, we have worked on what economic development means to us, to our team, and our definition is that, uh, black hawk company's role in economic development is to support businesses, to enhance the quality of life, and to increase tourism, that together creates opportunities, sustainability, and a stronger tax base for future generations. Uh, from our first meeting, we took, we took some homework, and we were to go out and talk to other members of either agencies or organizations, anyone we wanted to, basically, to help us to find what economic development is to the county, to our team, how can we improve that? Uh, we had several weeks to work on that, and we were to come back with three to five items, we came back to the second meeting with those items. We, of course, wrote all of those, uh, ideas on cards, we put the cards on the wall, and we grouped them into six categories at our second meeting. Uh, those six categories were policy, collaborate, collaboration, incentives or funding, uh, infrastructure, training, and quality of life. Uh, we decided that from those six priorities, we would come up with some, uh, subcommittees to work on some of those goals or those priorities. Uh, we did form about four or five subcommittees, and then in our subcommittees, we went about further finding out more information on those subcommittees. Uh, I'm on the, uh, the policy subcommittee, we met with the city of Waterloo, the Planning and Zoning Department, just to talk about any barriers, or what are some barriers to, that are currently in county policies that, uh, if we knew more about, maybe we could change that to help support economic development. if we knew more about, maybe we could change that to help support economic development. Other committees met and we are reporting on that tomorrow at that meeting. So that's where we are so far. Can I answer any questions about this economic development action? Thank you. I'll turn it over to Brad.
Good morning, Board. Brad Metcalf, safety coordinator. Rory and I are the co-champions of priority number four, which is to improve safety and security amongst facilities and zoning systems. Our team consists of PJ Norton, our property maintenance assistant, Jared Farmeter from environmental health program, Carl Kozak, the north unit ranger for the conservation department, we have Ryan Brennan, assistant county coordinator, Clint Hardman, the assistant IT director, we have Minnie Benson joining us from Black Hawk County Publicity Management, and we have Lieutenant Stafford joining us. So I feel like we got a really good group. I feel like we've got the county hopefully pretty well represented with that group of folks. Our current state right now is, we have met three times and our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday. So we'll have a fourth meeting that's coming Tuesday. And we have our priority clarified into three categories and abroad, we tried to narrow it down into three. And part of our homework was we surveyed cross-section of all the staff. We had a couple of people in each department that we surveyed and feel like it was all pretty consistent. It was kind of where we were already leaning, so that was, that was good. And we have, the last meeting, we worked on three barriers and we brainstormed through two of those. We have one to finish brainstorming through and then we're going to continue to just keep working towards putting the action plan in place for those barriers. Questions?
Brad, with respect to courthouse security conversation, have you guys had much opportunity to dive into that?
Not yet. I'm sure that will be out of the docket pretty soon here. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments for our chairs, for champs?
Don't attempt to be Davis.
Well, hearing that, we're, thank you all for your work. Outside of, outside of what I know you probably thought you were getting into it when we approved the strategic planning last year, but I appreciate you all taking it on and taking it serious. Because it does present a really cool opportunity, I think, for the county to make some transformation of their resources. Nine F, discussion of possible board action to discuss the possibility of including a staff restroom in the new clinic at my address.
Good morning again, Board. We're giving facilities director. This is a deviation from the original design for the clinic area. Originally, we had a small storage area and after much discussion with the folks with the health department, they did feel that it would be better served as a staff restroom. And I believe Caitlin had sent over an email also kind of going through that rationale as well. So you do have a copy of the cost breakdown, the changes that would be included for this area. So with that, do you have any questions for me? As far as cost contingency right now, we're sitting at, and this isn't taking into account our furniture bid, which did come in significantly under, but if you just look at what we had set aside for contingencies and take away the previous change orders, we're at sixty-eight thousand and some odd change right now. And so this, this particular change would reduce that by roughly twenty-five thousand. So I feel we're still.
Before you go too far in this, if you're expecting us to take action on this, we probably need more information included in your report. I mean, I don't know if we're just getting discussion today, but I was just going to say as far as the difference in the costs and that type of thing, so Karen has it as well as the public. If you want action taken today on what this dollar amount is and the change and that type of thing.
Yeah, we, we're kind of at a, a point now in the project where the contractors need to either, we either keep it the way it is with a storage room or we move port with a restroom.
And I know you sent it to us in an email, but I just mean for the record, we should probably have it if you're wanting action today, if you and Caitlin are wanting action today.
Okay.
Your information was not in link on the minutes, so people could actually see it publicly.
Okay.
So do you have those? Are you?
I mean, I, basically what this part of the project is, is a price request. And so if the board is comfortable with this, I can go ahead and get this signed and they can, it'll be submitted as a change order at a later date. So that's how those come to us with the project. So the change order at that point then would, I think, get into the weeds a little bit more as far as the detailed cost and the effects it has on the project in whole.
Okay.
But at this part of it, it's more of a, here's our price. If you choose to move forward, then we'll, we'll put it in as a change order.
I'm comfortable moving forward today. I think Caitlin's email laid out some pretty convincing reasons. You know, the current clinic location already has a staff bathroom. The, just the nature of their, their work, it makes it hard for them to get away from, from the clinic area to, to have to go use the restroom quickly. And I think Caitlin also mentioned just general like sanitation needs of, you know, needing to leave those other restrooms in the clinic area for people having to give, you know, a sample or whenever has something they need to do.
I think she definitely did. I was just thinking when we're looking at the costs and the change and if you had some numbers.
Yep. And again, that would be identified in the change order.
So we're just now saying the yes, go ahead. We don't, do you have an estimate?
I said about twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, the twenty-five thousand.
So do you remember what it was to the twenty-five?
It was already included. This is a deviation from the original project, so this would be taking approximately twenty-five thousand from our contingency fund to complete this.
And that contingency fund currently sits at sixty-eight thousand?
Currently sits at sixty-eight thousand.
So you're looking to potentially utilize twenty-five thousand?
Yep. That would leave us with about forty-three thousand dollars of contingency dollars moving forward.
Without factoring how much the furniture has come under.
That, right. So, and then also there's some contingency dollars that were remaining from the VA project as well. So we do know that we have a few items that are coming up exits. I think I've talked about that before. We're still waiting on pricing for that. But that's the, I guess that's the flow is we request the price, they give us the price, we, we sign off on that, they put it into a change order and that comes in front of the board.
Michelle, a question. Funding source on this, is this ARCA money?
Well, if you recall, to finish all our ARCA projects, we were going to have to use reserves of about eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. So this depends which bill hits first, I guess, whether you want to say it's part of or which it's part of, but it's already been budgeted that, the contingency amount. So you've, you've really already set the funds aside.
Yeah.
You set and determined what it.
Okay.
This bathroom, is this a one toilet, one sink?
Yeah, single, single restroom, yep.
Small closet.
Will it be open, public when they're walking in there too, or is this going to be?
Uh, I'm not sure how you, I'm assuming it's just a staff restroom.
Well, it's a question.
Is it open or is it going to be locked room then?
Uh, well, I think we have a choice. We have to do keying for that area still, so we can do it however we want, but I would assume that it would be open, so.
It's in a secured area.
Badged. Oh, it is in a secured area.
Yeah, that's why I was.
It's in a secured hallway.
Okay.
Yep. So to get into the clinic hallway, it's badge access into the, into that clinic area. Patients won't be able to just enter into that area. It's kind of traditional with other clinic areas where they would come and get you. So this is in that area where they come and get you and you're in the exam room area, lab, restrooms, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
I'll offer a motion to include a staff restroom at the estimated cost of twenty-five thousand dollars in contingency funding in the new clinic area at one restroom.
Second?
To move forward, this is like just taking you to the next.
Yep. And again, I will at a later date bring that in an official change order.
Second. All right. We got a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Propose, say aye. Most of yours. Ten thirty, or ten twenty, just to be good. If you need a break.
I could use a break. I was just trying to muscle.
We'll do a, yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll do a, we'll do a quick, a couple minutes, just a break.
Nobody else go there.
Oh, well, I mean, we already got three.
Watch Davis.
Yeah.
Yeah, y'all.
She's got, I guess, audio from about like that. Um, it'd be easier if we put it on the computer with, can we, is it like a PowerPoint? Can I put it onto this computer and you just run it through this keyboard? Would that be okay? If that's possible? Or, or you can join the Teams call and do it through Teams. You can do that with it. I'm sure it's very nice. Totally up to you. It's, it's easy. I don't feel the whole, it's totally done. Um, um, what, whatnot happens, we can make that.
They didn't give it to me. I don't have that part of, um, of the old black operators that have brought out this stuff with the low money and stuff like that. Any, but.
Yeah, I saw it.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. It was a cool.
We can make a good job. We've got high LED lights and everything else, so if you brought it, you brought someone in.
Air sharing. There, there you go. I forgot we had this going. So, and then just, yeah, just go through. So it's a little.
Yes, yes.
You don't need the.
That's a good one.
I'll leave it sitting at the end of the week. And then you just use this.
Typically, I wouldn't bring a PR report, but I, but I did not want to.
It shows online. You can see it up here that we were.
And then somebody's saying.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think, I think.
She?
Yeah. Yeah. The show of explanation, those lights, we're done. Yes, so a particular station.
Why, why on anything?
It's on my screen. They've scheduled for spring. It would be.
Who did this?
It's a very promising, it's a very promising, that really missing problem. You need to get that square. It's be quick, or you're going to.
We need to see that thing working. It's not working yet, is it?
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
You're in the car being contacted as well. Yeah.
Yeah. I meant to, this was just to come to work in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we're going, we just work like signs, so it's like, you know, that was. Yeah. They're thirty.
You can time out. See?
Yeah. We have been on.
I want to introduce.
Yeah. We have been. 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 We have been.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll move on to item ten, discussion of post-bid ordinance. Kick it over to Richie.
I'd like to introduce Felicia Hilton. I've worked with Felicia for over ten years on quality construction issues through the state, building trades. And this issue is not something that we've taken lightly. We're bringing forth the whole consideration of post-bid ordinance. Many questions come up, have we had much problems here? We've, we have had, but not a lot of. But the bigger problem is we have not done anything to protect ourselves as tax, for taxpayers' dollar here in the county. So I've asked Felicia to come and do a presentation on some of the history and issues with quality construction. And again, Felicia, thank you for coming today and look forward to what you have to say.
Well, thanks for having me, Felicia Hilton. I do a lot of the government affairs work and some other stuff for the North Central States Regional Council of Carpenters. And I just, Richie asked me to come and kind of talk to you about the post-bid quality assurance language. First, I've seen some of the questions. I just want to start with, it's totally up to you. This is just recommendation. And we are talking about post-bid, so not the bidding process. This is post-bid, pre-award. So selected your lowest responding, responsible bidder, and now this is pre the actual award, what we're discussing. But I just want to kind of introduce you to the carpenters. So we're the North Central States Regional Council of Carpenters. We represent thirty-six thousand union members in six different states, Iowa, Minnesota, North Dakota, Nebraska, South Dakota, Wisconsin. We are under the United Brotherhood of Carpenters, which is about a half million carpenters across the country. We have training centers all over the state. This is the one that we have in Altoona, but we have five training centers in the state of Iowa. And this is who we are, we're carpenters, we're interior systems, we're industrial carpenters, we're mill rights, we're pile drivers. So one of the speakers was talking about underwater welding, that would be us. So a lot of carpenters do that work. People don't associate us with that, but we do that. And we do a number of different things. So if you're in a department store, you'll see like industrial, if you were to go into Apple or Rolex, you'll see it's our members that are kind of doing this industrial kind of rollout, building cabinets and high-end things like that. So that's kind of who we are. But I'm here to talk about why the post-bid quality assurance questionnaire is important. This is what we call tax fraud. We see a lot of this in criminal underground community, or I'm sorry, criminal underground economy in construction. And the reason we refer to it as criminal is because when we go to these job sites, we do see a lot of crimes. They're not just people that are working under cash payment. We do see a lot of crimes. But the biggest thing is tax fraud does impact all of us. Because what it does is contractors that go on a project, maybe it's one that you're specifically building, a taxpayer-funded project by the county, without all of the vetting, you can get a contractor, a GC, that subs out to a secondary contractor, tier contractor. But all of the other contractors underneath them could be labor brokers. And the way, reason this impacts all of us is because they're not paying payroll taxes, they're not paying state federal taxes, they're not paying work comp and unemployment insurance. But the biggest piece is the taxes collected. There's about, I think it's about eight point four billion dollars lost by local and state governments across the country because of tax fraud. So it impacts police, fire, teachers, hospital, because we're not taking in the actual tax that we, that we should be getting from state, federal, and payroll taxes because they're just getting cash and ninety-nine people that are actually employed. So here's the labor trends that are happening in construction. So there is the rise of the gig economy in construction where workers are either contingent workers, day laborers, independent contractors like Uber and Amazon, you know, delivery folks like that. And what it does is it shifts the risk from the employer to the employees on many things when employers are, employees are misclassified, either by being paid cash in construction, cash by the square footage, or being considered an independent contractor. An independent contractor would do their own bid for the scope of work. They would have all the materials that they need, they have their own equipment, and they have their own equipment and their own, you know, T-shirts or gear. But there's people that are considered independent contractors that are working for a contractor, but they've not submitted the work, they've not put out the bid, they are wearing their shirts, they are being told when to come to work, where to go, what scope of work you're working on. We don't consider those independent contractors, they're actually employees. And then it kind of is this fissured workplace in the underground economy. On a construction site, you'll see, let's take a hotel for instance, you'll have one contractor doing one floor, you'll have another contractor doing another floor, you've even had it to where there's contractors that are just putting sheetrock in one hotel room, another contractor in another hotel room. So it fissures the workplace, that can also increase what happens on a construction site when you have this type of, of what we call construction industry tax fraud. And so people will say, well, what underground community, what, or economy, what, what is that? What, what does that mean and what's the business model? So one of the business models is it pays workers off the books. It can be sham companies, it could be a number of different things, but it's basically paying workers off the books. Wage theft is common in this economy, where people just get shorted their wages, they get told they're gonna get paid, they'll get paid next week, they'll get paid next week, they end up going to work because they actually need the money, but they end up not getting paid. Or their checks get shorted because they're not getting paid all the time and those kinds of things as well. And then workers working without work comp insurance is a big issue in this economy. And it diminishes safe workplaces. But the key to it is when workers get injured on projects that you would be funding, and they don't have work comp because they're in this gig economy, when they get injured, they go to public healthcare. So it's a double dip for a contractor, the GC or the sub who hired the labor broker, to not have work comp. Because as soon as the worker gets injured, if they have to go to the hospital, they're gonna tell them, say they were moving a refrigerator or whatever, you weren't working, you don't have work comp. But they still end up on the public dime in their care because they don't have work comp. And a lot of times, workers do become invisible, especially in construction, because they're inside of buildings and they're not easily seen when you're in construction. And so that creates a lot of abuse and exploitation, especially for, you know, vulnerable workers, immigrants, children. And it is a human trafficking issue in construction. People don't see it that way, but labor trafficking is more profitable than drug trafficking because of the money that it actually creates. So is it a crime? You know, there's, we think it is, so we call these sites, in, in our industry, we call them crime scenes. But workers' compensation fraud, unemployment insurance fraud, tax evasion, all crimes. Wage theft, it's a crime depending on some states, I'll show you later in the presentation where Iowa has what theft is and how it's a crime, so it's a little difficult here. But fraud on insurance premiums, all the tricks and lies, the frauds, deception, all those things are crimes. Labor trafficking and human trafficking is a crime, working in unsafe conditions is a crime, making workers pay off debt is a crime. So obviously, labor traffickers, and a lot of people don't put this together, but this is our world that we have to operate in, so we see it all the time. But labor traffickers work with the sex traffickers and the drug traffickers. They're all moving people and moving products pretty similarly together. You just don't see it in that way, because it depends on how it's expressed, when they get busted. And a lot of times, it takes a lot to get busted. If someone gets busted, labor trafficking, it's because they found some truck full of people and all of a sudden it makes the news. Most of the time, no one knows that it's happening, they don't know where it's happening. So is it a civil matter? In some cases it is, but the civil remedies have just been unable to solve some of the stuff that's happening in the workplace, especially in construction. I'm gonna pass this out to you guys, because this is gonna help us kind of. So this is typically what it would look like. So everything at the top is pretty legitimate. We have like someone like yourselves, government, commercial retailer developer, multifamily, senior housing developer, all legit. The general contractor comes in, the county sees the general contractor's bid, the county sees that the general contractor needs, has dotted all the i's, crossed every t, has all the documentation, everything is great, looks legitimate, bid awesome. It's after that, where the GC then goes to the first-tier subs, which are drywall, installation, wood framing, flooring. This is our industry, but it also happens in the mechanical trades as well. And some of the licensed trades as well, like it, it does happen. But anyway, you see that layer of the first-tier subs, those first-tier subs, a lot of times they don't have employees, because it's kind of an accepted practice in construction, that you don't really have to have employees. So they might not have employees, so what they do is they have relationships with what we call labor brokers. People that move people from Nebraska to Texas to Iowa to perform work. And they can move anywhere from twenty to two hundred people, depending on the scope of the project. Because at this point, in the development, the county is no longer involved, it's the GC that's managing these contracts. And the GC then would give those contracts to the sub, and then it's the sub that's then hiring labor brokers. Those labor brokers bring the workers, and those are the workers that perform the work. And in that system is where the labor brokers pay cash, the labor brokers will house a bunch of workers, which we've seen in mobile homes, one house, no plumbing, you name it, they will house the workers, they pay them cash. In some cases, they may not get paid because they owe debts. A lot of these people did come with some type of documentation, labor brokers take documentation to pay it back, and then you might get your documentation. So this is what is happening in construction, and a lot of it is on some of the public projects. Sometimes it happens on some of the private projects, but investors are different than some of the taxpayer-funded projects. Investors, the money that someone would invest in a project has to, it has to end on time, as close as possible. They wanna be able to get renters or commercial renters in the project, they don't want the project, they want a hundred-year building is what they want. They don't wanna have to contend with investors, because the building isn't gonna be sustainable, or it's falling apart, or it has a bunch of issues. So they're pretty much stickler on some of this stuff when it comes to private development. But here's a case that happened in Cedar Rapids, I believe it was twenty-twenty-three, right when the state was rolling back child labor laws. We took a number of House representatives, city, we took the attorney general from Lynn County, I'm sorry, the county attorney from Lynn County, and a couple of state senators on this job site. This is just to show what, why we call these crime scenes. We did not know we were gonna run into an eleven-year-old child, which we believe is eleven years old. We did not know we would run into this kid, but it blew up all over the news. The city of Cedar Rapids had invested, I think like almost eight million dollars in tax increment financing. The state gave nine hundred thousand dollars from Op speak and Op Development, and the HUD tax credits that they got from the state were seventeen million dollars. This developer was TWG, it's the Banjo Block Project, and TWG left Iowa after this story, because they had also been by, found to have violated child labor laws in Indiana and other places in the Midwest. But this is what happens when sometimes a GC or possibly GC developer has relationships that build projects in this manner, is that the labor broker will bring anybody on the project to finish the work. They don't care if their kids are not. This is what happened, this is a story from twenty-twenty. This was when the derecho happened, this is Cedar Rapids. A bunch of workers from Texas brought up here to work, they were left here stranded, they had no food. The Catholic Church of Cedar Rapids took them in, we helped them, but it took a lot for us to get Blue Sky, which was the Colorado-based restoration contractors that hired this labor broker, that brought these workers up here, and then abandoned them when he didn't pay them. And they were stuck up here, and it took a lot to get them paid, but they were paid, but still, no deductions were taken out, no taxes were paid on their labor or anything, they just wrote them checks and prayed that they made it home. So it's not like it's not happening in Iowa, it's just when it does happen, it makes the news. But when we catch people doing it, it doesn't make the news. We can only do so much to try and get people recovered for lost wages. But it is a little bit of whack-a-mole right now, because of the way in which the contracts are let, and there's no real follow-up or folks looking to make sure that labor brokers aren't connected to projects that are being built. So back to the basics of theft in Iowa. So in Iowa, to prove theft, you have to show intent to deprive in order for it to be theft by deception. So it's hard to prove wage theft, or this type of, you brought people in and you intended to not pay them. You have to show the intent, so a lot of times when we're filing with the DOL, we're filing on workers that are already afraid, even more afraid now. And getting them to stay throughout the entire process of recovering their wages, to continue to testify and give testimony to recover their wages is difficult for them, but it's also difficult for us if we lose track of where the workers are and where they've gone to out of fear, or maybe they've just moved on. But FINSON, which is the Financial Crimes Enforcement Network, issued a notice in August fifteenth of twenty-twenty-three to alert financial institutions about this continuing issue, and you'll see the FINSON notice in your handout that I gave you. The FINSON notice basically alerts the, the banking industry about insurance fraud, tax evasion, and what's happening in the schemes and how they're set up. So I think this will be helpful as you look at the discussion of the quality assurance, the post-bid quality assurance questionnaire, what you're actually looking for. So for the banks, they kind of put the, FINSON, the Crime Enforcement Network, put this notice out, and they're in cooperation with the IRS as well. But they also came up with eleven red flags that they asked the banks to look at. Number nine, I think, is, is important, but it's, all of them are important to understanding how it works, but I think number nine is important for the local governments. It asks that, you know, banks look at or send a suspicious activity report if they see a company's bank account has minimal, minimal to no tax or payroll-related payments to IRS, state and local taxing authorities, or a third-party payroll company, despite pulling out large volumes of money. So it's recognizing, the, the Crime Enforcement Network is recognizing that banks have to pay attention if you have large banking accounts that you can clearly see are paying people some kind of money, but has no withdrawals to pay the IRS or local taxing authorities whatsoever. And so that's kind of what we're trying to get the local governments and county governments to somewhat recognize that that is what's happening on a number of construction projects, that they are not paying what they should be paying for the project itself as a whole, and then if workers don't have work comp, they end up coming right back onto the taxpayer dime for, for their care. So the post-bid quality assurance is just, we consider those like guidelines to kind of set a, a tone that in Blackhawk County, or Lynn County, or Johnson County, Woodbury County passed it, Polk County has passed it, as well as a number of cities, Sioux City, Des Moines, Cedar Rapids. But to kind of give a guideline that if we're gonna build something in Blackhawk County, these are the things that we expect you to adhere to. So contractors have filled out this questionnaire, it's not a hard questionnaire for a legit general contractor. But what it does say, that within fourteen days of you getting the award, you submit your list of subcontractors, it gives the county or the city an opportunity to look at the subcontractors, examine if they've had any huge cost overruns or delays or anything else with those subcontractors on the whole. And it makes the GC tell those guys, you guys kind of have to be up to par with what the city or the county is expecting. It's really to say that we're a county that also sees economic development as workforce development, so these kinds of things that diminish that aren't acceptable. So I know there were some questions about what you wanna put in, some of the counties and cities have put different things in their questionnaire, not all of them are cookie cutter, but they basically have the same type of questions to make sure that the GC is solid, and that the GC understands that the subs need to be legitimate subcontractors. This isn't about union or non-union, I get that all the time, but it really isn't. There's a ton of legitimate contractors that are non-union that can't compete for work because they're competing with this model of business. And so that's kind of what the post-bid is meant to do, is to say this, we're Blackhawk County, we have standards, you're gonna be selected, but before you receive the award, this is what we're asking you to answer, and then we can examine that information. It is not to boot any contractor out from any project, it is to let them know that you have won this bid, and we expect, once you get to this questionnaire, that you will adhere to all these things, and that you are not caught up in any nefarious contracting activities. I mean, that's pretty much what it is, and you can kind of put the questions how you want. We had questionnaires that only had sixteen questions, we have some that have thirty-eight questions. I mean, it just depends on what the city and county thinks is most important. But the real push is that this project should also have some workforce development too. It shouldn't just be that you're the lowest bid, so you make all the money off the top with the worst, poorest people at the bottom. Like you have some standards and it's expected that you adhere to, because it's taxpayer-funded money, and you also wanna promote workforce development. So that's kind of the idea behind it, but I, I'll be going to answer any questions.
You said, uh, the criminal underground economy, you guys go to sites and there's that happening, how do you know? Like, who were the people that are illegal, and then how do you know?
Well, we don't, we don't know who's illegal, because we're looking at safety violations, we're looking at just the trashiness of the site, because that's part of it, we're looking to make sure workers aren't living on the site, that's part of it. But we don't really go in there to find out who's legal or not legal, we're just trying to make sure that elected officials and people know that this is happening on projects that they're spending taxpayer dollars on. We try to talk to schools about proper badging, especially if they're doing construction work while school is in session, which happens quite a bit, but we've run into some issues, the Havana Community School District actually did a really good policy on badging, because they recognize that they don't know all the workers that are on the project while school is going on. So if something were to happen, they wouldn't know who was on the project at all. We had this happen with a worker, this is, this is a, a worker got injured, it's like, I think it's West Des Moines or something, he had a sazza in the eye or something, but he worked for no one. He worked for no one, he was using someone else's tools, but he worked for no one. And so we have that same sense about school construction, like you just can't have construction sites where you absolutely have no idea who's on the project. So that's, that's part of it, we don't really look at that, we just kind of look and see, does this project look like it is a crime? People living here, the site itself unsafe, seeing underage people, seeing people that might not, we think, may not be legally in the country. But we don't need necessarily base it on that, we really just look at the patterns of, are you paying cash? Are you paying by the square foot? Talk to the workers, have they been paid, are they missing payment? And most of the time, they tell us, yes, they were talking to the elected officials when we went on the job site and saw the kid. They were talking to him and telling him all about what they're doing, where they're living, how they're, all of it. So it's not something that people, I believe some people in the, in the state don't know what's happening, but it's how to address it. And we think that, you know, putting. And we think that, you know, putting contractors or GCs in a place where they have to do some policing of their own project and that the counties and the cities actually say there is some standard to actually getting this project. We know the GC is legit, but it's what's underneath that we wanna make sure is good. And that's the part that gets lost is after the GC presents everything that's great. And then who's he doing business with and what does that look like?
This really came out after the ratio in Lynn County. They had numerous problems, Marshall Town after the tornado. And then the question came up, do we have a time happening here in Blackhawk County? It was about two years ago, I think Sheriff Thompson was helping us. Personally came to us on wage theft. We had to get the sheriff involved in trying to correct that. My previous life, I can tell you, there's been numerous contractors that we've been identified that's been using problems. And yes, they've been on some of the county projects. But this at least put some effort in some, like we should say the standard that the county is putting more responsibility on the general contractor that the subcontractors also have to be held accountable. And right today, we have none of that. We have no way of making sure what's going on with subcontractors.
GCs remove subcontractors from projects all the time, all the time. Like there's no, they can hire, this is a merit system in the trades. So there's, you know, people man up, man down, people get laid off depending on what. But contractors, subcontractors definitely get let go for violations of things and, you know, not completing or doing projects the way that the GC wants all the time. So this isn't anything that would prohibit the GC from being able to remove a contractor that's violating wage and hour standards or anything like that. It's just basically saying that the city or the county expects that the GC would adhere to this and that subcontractors, and you receiving the list of subcontractors would allow for either engineering, whoever, or city staff, or even yourselves, if you know, hmm, I don't know about this subcontractor. We've had an issue with him in the past. GC could easily remove them from the list and find another sub. We see this happen quite a bit in cities and counties that have passed it. But it's really, it's not a burdensome thing. They turn it in, contractors have filled it out. And I can show you personnel and put it on the screen, but have filled it out and built the project. And it just, like I said, it's not really to get rid of anybody that would bid the work and receive the actual bid, but it is the award. It's post-bid, the award. So this has nothing to do with bidding. It's all about, once you received it, are you in line with the standards that Blackhawk County has set? Most of them will be. But it's really just looking at the subcontractor list and making sure you have subs that aren't doing labor broker activities on your projects because you just wouldn't know it.
In some of the places that have adopted this, one of the questions that staff would ask, the first question is the vetting process. Once we get the questionnaire, how is that information verified? What's been the practice to your knowledge of public communities?
So once, once folks get the questionnaire, it depends on, it all then falls back on what happens on the project. So I don't know if you guys are aware of the Sioux City jail. Housman, Sioux City Jail. Well, they ran into a bunch of delays. They did have some of this wage issue stuff. They, I think something happened with the damper system in the prison. And they had a number of cost overruns, they had a number of delays. And right now, it literally is Sioux City, they're all suing each other over this jail project that was delayed, cost overruns, standards, all of that. They filled out the questionnaire. But they filled out the questionnaire and it gives the county and the city, because it was a joint project, some cushion, hopefully in this lawsuit of what they're suing each other over, the jail, that these things weren't supposed to happen on this project. And who knows if that's part of the delays and what happened with the delays? But we know that all this does is give, give you the ability to say, no, you told us you were a legitimate, straight-up, by-the-book contractor.
But do you, so it's good, I can appreciate that on the, on the, on the county protection side. But on, is there an entity that is, that's currently doing the sort of vetting of the information? Or is it really just sort of there as a, as a level of, as a layer of protection for, for counties?
It's kind of both, but it depends on how you wanna do it.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah. And I was just curious, if there are more counties, what, what they're, are they spot vetting? Right, where it's maybe not every single question or the questionnaire, but they're choosing, you know, picking and choosing.
Yes.
And, and just because process-wise, if you got thirty-six questions, there's no way.
Yeah, but it's verifying work comp. It's what you think you want your engineer department or whoever to really verify that the work comp license, which you'll see in the FINCEN notice, that they aren't borrowing it because they paid for it, borrowed it, made a copy of it, submitted it as legitimate. But you verify that that is that contractor's work comp for the sub or for, it depends on what you want the engineer to vet, to vet. So it could be just two things. It could be that you don't have any wage violations on record, or it could be checking OSHA, you have no OSHA violations recently. Or, you know, people might have them, but nothing horrific. And it could be, you know, vetting work comp. You could only verify three of those things. But it just depends on what the county wants the staff to do or vet. Work comp, I think, is probably the biggest because people will say, I have work comp for myself. And they'll just, we call them ghost policies, where they cover the work comp basics, but they might have sixty guys on a project without work comp. But they submitted that they have ghost policy and they're an independent contractor, but they brought sixty guys on there. So it's those things that I think it's up to you to decide what you want staff to vet.
Another problem that this helps alleviate is if it's your own business, if it's your own home, you have the choice to sit there and say, I don't wanna take this price from this contractor. I've already found that he's not done a good job or he's screwed somebody else out of work. In the public sector, we don't get that choice. And without something in place like this, that we can use past practice to say, no, we, we do, we will not accept a price from this subcontractor. Today, we have to take their advice. We have no choice. We've had a problem here in Blackhawk County with, I think it was a backup generator years ago, situation, vetting some of these questions might have raised some red flags. But then today, this recent project we had here in the auditor's office with the foreign contractor, today we still have to take the price from that contractor. We have to accept them, even though they done, they caused the project to go late. We don't have no choice. We have to. Without something in place that says, we will not accept a price from this contractor, we have to take them, accept them if they're the lowest bid. You have to have something in place in order to call that out.
Even, can't we even have stipulations within the contract though, or is that forbidden?
No, then you're, that's post-bid. You can't do anything to after the bidding process is done.
Oh, right, 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 right.
It's after. That's the question I'm asking the subs.
You could put them in the RFPs though. So you could put that, you know, some of these things you expect before you even bid. So required work, it just depends on, you could reiterate what is already in some of these documents, but putting it more upfront in the bid spec itself, where you're saying, yes, we know that we have a statement of you have to have work comp on this project. We get that, but we expect that every tier of contracting will have work comp. You can put that in the bid document. Like it's, it doesn't mean that everything has to be in ordinance or law or whatever. It's just guidelines and standards for what you want, either on the front end or post-bid on the back end. But it doesn't have, it wouldn't preclude anybody from bidding or, you know, it wouldn't stop that floor layer from bidding, but they would now know this is required upfront. You wanna see work comp, legitimate work comp for all your workers. Because this is, and I'll close with this. We had a little study where we looked at a number of, we looked at Polk County, we looked at the city of Des Moines. And we looked, and this is just so we can get a sense of idea. I think we might have done, we might have done Iowa City as well. But just kind of picking on different sizes of cities and counties, looking at the larger ones. And looking at all the documents related to just vertical construction, just vertical construction. And what we found is from permitting to planning, all the documents that the cities and counties will look at the project and they'll know the type of grass, they'll know what type of trees, they'll know the type of roofing, what's, if it's brick, if it's siding, they'll know all the details about the actual building, but nothing about the workers. In not one document was there anything that asked, how many workers does it take to put up forty-eight thousand square foot building? How many trades craft people do you need to do it? And what trades do we need and how many do you think we would get? And what are the labor costs of that? Zero, absolutely none on the workers. And we kind of feel like construction is like the one industry where it's accepted to pay cash. It's accepted that a contractor wouldn't have a payroll. When really, right now, it's just downloading software. The smallest contractor should have payroll and have payroll documents and should be able to submit a verified payroll. Not certified, but just this is the person we paid, blacked out social security number. This is the wages. We've seen invoices for construction labor and it says labor, two point three million dollars. That's all. But submitted for material, it spelled out what, what was paid for, what that invoice has, but labor, labor. It doesn't have name of employee, blacked out social security number, and how much their check was that week. Nothing. That's just how it's invoiced, that's how it's accepted. And all we're saying is, we just are asking people to be more thoughtful about it because of the men and women that are actually doing the work. And that's, that's really it. Just, that's all we're asking.
You, you come representing a union though, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So I think, so you know why people are like, is this not a pro-union push?
No.
But it does seem like it is. You know, it may not be.
Yeah, it, it may seem like that, but I'm telling you, you could talk to contractors that actually have payroll and employees, and they are getting cut out of the market for this. We, we do a lot of stuff. It's, some stuff is hard to cut us out of the market. You're not gonna, you're not gonna build like a huge bridge and pile and, you know, you're not gonna go on to the Mississippi and do work without carpenters. The Army Corps of Engineers, they're calling us. We're, we're getting that work, I can promise you that. They're just not gonna do it. But in some cases, you know, there are a lot of legitimate contractors that are competing in the same market and they are not able to get the bids. And they have payroll, they have work comp, they have some kind of health insurance, but they can't get the bid because these guys are already thirty percent lower than what they would be. And they don't have pension plans. So this isn't a union push. We know that we are the top of the scale. But we're also looking out for the industry, the market, the market. And the public sector is a third of the market. That's a big market across the state of, you know, Iowa that there is public projects going on and this is the competitive market in that public project work. That that's what we're competing with, union, non-union. If you're a legitimate contractor, you're competing with the bottom barrel in construction. And it's, that's what we're talking about. And we're just saying, as a taxpayer, we just don't think that that's legitimate. And I think other businesses, you can look at from Hy-Vee to the restaurant down the street, everyone else is in compliance. There's so many businesses that follow the law. Whatever you guys would do, they're gonna follow it. You could change it to whatever and they're gonna follow it from state level on down. There's a ton of businesses that do exactly the right thing. But in construction and in a number of industries that have this gig economy model, they're not expected to do that. But the mom and pop coffee shop, they have to do all the legitimate things. No one's even thinking that they're not. They don't even expect to not do it. And so that's what we're saying is that this isn't, this is just making sure that you guys are aware that there are things that you could do that would help the average person working on these projects. Because like I said, we think economic development is tied to workforce development, especially when it comes to construction.
It feels like post, I, I recognize there's also a pre-bid process, but it feels.
It's not allowed no more.
It's not, okay. Because post-bid does feel like it's less cumbersome.
Some of it's allowed, some of it's allowed pre-bid, actually most of it is. And so that's, that's something we gotta be clear about. There are, it is not clear where you delineate what is and isn't allowed. But if you're talking about, for example, requiring, requiring work comp insurance for your subcontractors, that can be required pre-bid. If you're, if you, if you wanna lay out certain conditions for that, you absolutely can do that pre-bid. There are some limitations I can't, I'm prepared right now to describe exactly what it's like because it isn't entirely clear. For example, what's under the code is that you may not go into proprietary information pre-bid. That's prohibited by code. And that if you do get into proprietary information, they can, they can object to that or they can provide a lender, you know, with the understanding that it's going to be confidential. We do get into some of those situations where standard, or we may receive proposals that do contain proprietary information, create gray zone to get public records related to that. But the bottom line is that most of the information in terms of, you know, like what kind of, what requirements were for subcontractors can be put in there pre-bid.
So we're gonna outline requirements pre-bid. The thing I, the thing I like about this is that it is, that the questionnaire is post-bid. So the concerns of, well, you're gonna, you're gonna ask these contractors to provide all this information is gonna negatively impact the number of bids you're getting. Well, it, it doesn't slow up the process, it doesn't, we keep moving along. It is, once we get that bid, you're right, Rich, if I'm getting work done in my house, I'm not just going after the lowest, lowest cost. And the fact that we don't have a ton of tools at our disposal to ensure that we're not only getting low cost, but we're also getting quality work because of state and federal restrictions, we, we don't have that. And this does feel like a mechanism for us to be able to ensure quality, not just lowest cost. And I do think that in the long run, it's important to make sure the buildings are built the right way. And, and I think that's probably a little bit of why you, to your point, this isn't necessarily union versus non-union. It's, it's quality shops versus non-quality shops doing, doing the public's work. So I'm, I'm intrigued by it, I'm, I'm supportive. Generally, I've got some questions on how we can maybe condense the questionnaire so that it doesn't, it, it does feel sort of clunky a little bit as, as I was looking through it. But the other part that I've shared with Rich is wanting to really figure out if there's a way to, to get into cost overruns on this. Because cost and time overruns, right? And, and there's context to some of those and I get it. But I think if we can craft a process that allows the board to go into decision-making with our eyes wide open, I think we're all in a, in a better spot.
I think that is part of why it's important when we talked about especially new policies of all of the board members being perfect to the same information and the discussion that's had by the policy review members, which are in turn our staff that have been making the decisions and making the forms and having the bid, the meetings beforehand with, with contractors and that type of thing and everything to secure that information as much as possible. So that might be what we wanna go forward with, with all of us getting some of that input as well. But yeah, but your presentation very much a part of this, so thanks for sharing this information too.
So last night, a gentleman from Lynn County was sick last week. I was asking him to help to use this information. But he, he actually does the questionnaire when they come in, Lynn County. City of Cedar Rapids has their set at twenty-five thousand, where they do the questionnaire because of how many problems. because of how many problems they had after the ratio. The county, it has their set at one million. And they reduce their question, I sent that out last night, so you have a chance to look at that. But we've also had the question, is this, should this be policy or should this be ordinance? It's, it's both in some places, but I know there's some questions, what direction we need to go with that. My personal concern is still is the taxpayer dollar's protection on having, we may not have the problem today, but we didn't know there was gonna be a ratio in Lynn County that, that happened as well. You have to be prepared ahead of time. Is this gonna increase or decrease bidders? Quite frankly, if it's decreasing, that's probably a sign that we've been having problems, children already been in the work. I can tell you personally, I've talked with contractors, union and non-union, that will not bid public work projects simply because it's not a level playing ground. This is simply one way of helping level that playing ground that legitimate contractors. Quite frankly, a lot of the union contractors, they pay stuff that the non-union contractors do. It ain't like this is gonna be a big flush and it's gonna be a bunch of union contractors getting this work. It's not. But it is giving us the ability to protect ourselves from the bad players. And if we haven't had them, we've been lucky because they're out there.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
And I think Chuck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Felicia touched on a lot of things I was gonna talk about, but I have some prepared statements and I wanna answer a few questions too, one from Supervisor Brandt. Good morning Supervisors, my name is Chuck Ketcher, I'm the Bidest Manager of IBW Local Two-E-A here in Waterloo, Iowa. Also, I serve as the President of the Waterloo Building Trades Council and I'm by trade, I am a licensed Class A electrician in the state of Iowa. I went through an apprenticeship after I left the Marine Corps and then doing trade for over twenty years, so, and worked all over the Midwest, so. I would like to continue the conversation with you, the adoption of post-bidder language for Blackaw County Taxpayer Finance Project. This is important and you may ask why. Currently, there are no protections in place to shield the county from irresponsible contractors that may deliver a subpar finished product. The only merit currently in place according to the law is low bid. While some may argue that is better for the taxpayer, I would argue that is not. This is not a union or a non-union issue. The policy will attract more professional contractors who will deliver more value to the county and stand behind the product once it's delivered. Thus providing more value for the taxpayer dollar, you would never hire a contractor to work on your personal property based solely on the lowest bid without reviewing the potential contractor's track record and how they conduct business. The long run, doing things current, during, sorry, doing things correctly from the beginning saves money down the road. Like they say, the satisfaction of a cheap price, living with a subpar product, go a little way in a hurry. Another issue with poor performers in the construction industry is the use of misclassified workers who cheat the tax code. These workers operate as independent contractors for so-called front organizations of employers. How will the county obtain a fair product with some form of warranty is their types of subcontractors are hired? In fact, in twenty twenty-four, a report estimates that misclassified workers in the state of Iowa alone have led to forty-three million dollars in wage theft and unpaid taxes. As one of the largest counties in the state of Iowa, we can do better, we can do better than allowing the use of misclassified workers in, on county projects funded by taxpayer money. Adopting post-bidder language is to not merely a policy change, it is a commitment to the quality, fairness, and fiscal responsibility that ensures Blackaw County sets its standards of excellence on its projects. Safeguarding both the county's interests and its resources, let us take the opportunity to lead by example and enhance the integrity of our construction projects. Like, I'd like to answer Supervisor Brandt, yes, I come from a union and Felicia comes from a barber's, I come from the mechanical trade. But like Rich said, talking, there's contractors that are non-union, that have been in business for over a hundred years and you're not getting a lot of bids on some of your projects. And unfortunately, in the public sector, the way to state Iowa law is rant, strictly sealed low bid. You go out to like, for instance, in Waterloo right now, we have the International Paper Project going out there. If you go out there and walk around that project, you'll see a lot of union contractors and you'll see non-union contractors. And every one of them was vetted and was not, they were not strictly awarded that a low bid is what they've done with their track record because they wanna build boxes by next September so they can put product out the door and make money. Unfortunately, in the public taxpayer world, that's not always the case. That's, you know, it's not a union, non-union issue, it's a fair contractor and a bad contractor issue in my opinion.
So wasn't that policy been used, been used by the city of Waterloo for that?
They've, they've not used any projects yet. The City Hall and the evidence garage have fallen under. So they said theirs is two hundred and fifty thousand, so their projects will be given cover to the post-questionnaire as well.
Is it which one? Which two?
The City Hall Development and then with the Evidence Garage.
And another thing too is like, whether it's an issue of bad contract, contracting union, non-union, these, these issues are going on on projects. I've worked all over and I've been on projects and you go to a good project with a good general contractor, there's safety standards, there's, there's not dirty. You go to a bad job site and there's literally trash everywhere, unsafe. And somebody does get hurt, there's no workers comp and that never gets reported. That person is just gone, out of the state, never just be seen again. And I've been on those kind of jobs unfortunately. Most of the jobs I've worked on, I've worked in industrial projects, I've worked in chemical plants, I've worked in public projects. And my career in Iowa, public projects were always the worst projects because of those kind of contractors on them.
Then what, what do you, what do you do about that then? If you see, if you see the violations happening, who do you turn, do you turn them in and if you do, who do you turn them in to?
Who do I turn them in to? As a, as a worker?
Yeah.
As a worker, you're, I'm working for a legitimate subcontractor and it's, you know, you're working for a general contractor, it's really nothing. Those general contractors that bring their people in are not gonna do nothing about it. Period. They just want the job done. It's a different one, it's not, it's not black and white out there unfortunately. You know, like, just like here, like one of the things I'm asking is like, is it is, when you're hiring somebody, you need to know who's doing the work. Just like if you hire somebody that work for the county, you're gonna want I-9 forms and social security cards and all that stuff, you know, it's, I don't know why the construction side should be the same, they're working the same buildings, working around your folks, they need to be safe too.
And I don't wanna seem like I'm average serial to unions, I know it probably appears that way right now.
No, no, absolutely not, I don't, no.
Because we've, this is like three or four people representing unions who've come at us with this. No, just single contractors that I've heard from that are promoting this. And so that's why it, it appears that it's definitely a.
I could talk to contractors coming down and talk to you. I mean, they're bidding projects and mostly private sector, you know, if it's worth their time to come down and talk to you, they'd absolutely talk to you. But unfortunately, my contractors, I have one contractor that's a hundred and twenty-some years old in Waterloo, Iowa, and they won't even bid these projects anymore, you know, unfortunately. They've been here for over a hundred years, you know.
Felicia, you ready to say something?
I just wanna, and I'm not saying that this happens all, all the time, but, and I can say this, but this was, you know, we look at bid documents all the time and this was just a, a big document in Iowa. And I'm not saying this is, I'm not gonna name the contractor who's about to be award, but the estimated cost of the engineer for the project was one point three million dollars. The lowest bid came in at seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The second lowest bid came in at one point two million. So when you see, and the third came in at one point two forty-seven. So when you see that kind of drop, there's just gotta be some questions to take at that point. The engineer's estimated cost for that work, unless the city of Des Moines engineer obviously has no idea what he's estimating. We don't understand, and we've had conversations with them and this isn't, this has nothing to do with the, the quality assurance questionnaire, it's just what's happening in the market and what's happening in the public sector. If that was in the private sector, that bid would have been thrown out immediately. Private sector would not have accepted that bid because they would have went to the second lowest bid, they would say, already, you don't have workers, you left off payroll, you left off work comp, that means your workers aren't gonna show up Monday through Friday or the Saturday, we're gonna be looking for them, we have five guys this day, two guys the next day, they're not gonna go for that bid. And that's, that's the issue there. And it's unfortunate that you guys are kind of stuck in that, but that is, that's why the post-bid questionnaire is important because that's typically the problem, is like the second highest bid and that was, that was a union contractor, but the third highest bid was a non-union contractor. And they were still all cut out because the lowest bid was seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on a one point three million dollar bid that the city engineer estimated for the project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving forward, I wanted to give more information out here. On Friday, the gentleman from Lynn County is gonna make himself available, like staff to get on there, let's set up a Zoom meeting, ask more questions. So I'm not pushing this, I'm trying to get more education out here of what this, why we need it. So at this point, just wanna do another information as far as the need and then how it's happening with Lynn County. He kind of scuffed at how long it takes him to go through the questionnaires, like, we know a lot of the contractors already after the first couple, that it's just checking them off the boxes and like who's the subcontractors on. So he's willing to take some time and visit with us and again, address some questions.
For those that had questions that are able to attend on Friday? You've already checked them out?
No, I just, this just came up last night.
Oh.
So he's been sick, so I just got a call from yesterday.
But I mean, if Friday didn't work to try to make sure we had a date where everybody could.
Yeah, I, I just got that information, so I have a chance to get that out now.
I didn't remember what time I saw you email.
I want people to be comfortable making this decision. The need is there, it's a matter of where we set it for Blackaw County. It doesn't have to be at two hundred and fifty thousand, it could be like a million. But we have to have something in order to protect ourselves from bad players. We may not even seen them yet. But I can tell you, I know one contractor that I've dealt with in the past, all of a sudden they will show up, they will get the job and the job will be a problem because they're out there. So unless you have something that sets some standard, we don't have that today.
I think, I appreciate all the information presented today, I think it's clear, I think we need to see some level of this. And so I wanna make sure we keep the conversation going to figure out what that is. You know, the issues I'm most concerned about are the workman's comp part, as well as the wage theft part. Wage theft is a big issue in Iowa. And I always view, when we're spending public dollars, we wanna maximize the true economic impact of that and that happens when the people at the bottom of the totem pole are being treated fairly. And, you know, that they've got fair wages and stuff. So that's, that's where we get the maximum economic impact is not when somebody at the top is making most of the money, but.
But, but I think we do owe our staff, like I said, we've been doing an excellent job, the staff has been, and like I say, the questions that have come up are a result of knowing and understanding kind of what that process has been, what's been working and what hasn't. But I, yeah, so I just think anything that we can, if there is something we can do, I, my problem has been with it since day one is, why don't we, if it's something we can strengthen in the before end, let's do that and eliminate, let's go through the process of selecting someone, them being a low bidder. But there have been cases where we don't always select a low bidder for reasons. But I'd have to go back and pull what that would be, but I'm just saying that we do, if there are some flags out there to us, we have paid attention to things. But anyhow.
Felicia might be able to help with some of that, Lynn. There was a lawsuit, I think it was Master Builders, Polk County, where the post-bid was challenged and went to Supreme Court, pre-bid was, that will tell you more of exactly what is acceptable and not acceptable pre-bid.
The code puts forth specific items that are not allowed, it's not really the one list, what's not allowed pre-bid, most of it is. It's also important to understand the money bidding policy, this has existed for a lot longer than I've been here. And it mirrors chapter twenty-six, it's language which allows the county to accept the lowest responsible responsive bid. Number one, it's gotta be in response, it's gotta be responsive to the RFP. Number two, there are other factors that can be weighed as to whether it's responsible. One that comes to money is when we select a contractor, this is a construction bid, when we select a contractor to provide healthcare services for the jail, we have to consider that. Why? Because one, you not have the experience requirement that we have. There are various ways you can put those into the RFP if you choose not to go the post-bid route. But there are, it is correct, there was a, there is a case on it that did limit some of which.
Yep. Sounds like we've got some work ahead to get through it, but yeah, let's see where it goes. But move to item eleven, any reports or info from the board? Otherwise.
The only thing I was gonna mention, Yolanda brought up at the department head meeting of when we would be scheduling, like the, I think the last couple of years we've done the highlights of twenty-five and each of the departments has come forward and told kind of like where we started in January one and some of those great projects we've had. I wondered about maybe scheduling over a period of three weeks because our agendas have been pretty busy and full and trying to give everybody as much time as possible to work that in rather than just two weeks as we did two weeks before, if that was okay. We've looked at those maybe like for the three first of the month dates since December or two, something. Okay.
And then Kathy was gonna get with us on the, what was it, Storm Green or?
Drains.
Drains, yeah. Drains issue, work session.
Indy Center.
Yeah.
Very good. Item twelve, resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna throw record lunch, go ahead. Resolution pursuant to provision subsection twenty-one point five C, Code of Five, Blackaw County Board Supervisor shall proceed in a closed session for the purpose of discussion, discussing pending litigation and appointment of counsel to advise the Civil Service Commission relative to an appointment. Just gonna move.
Second.
Go call please.
Richard, open.
Yes.
Warts.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Kurt and Bob.
Yes.
All right. You gonna take a break again?
Yes, we need another break.
Well, I signed it up.
Yep. So I entertain a motion to adjourn the Board Supervisor's meeting in closed session?
So moved.
All the taper?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint attorney to advise and preside for the Civil Service Commission in appointment?
So moved.
Motion in a second, all the tapers say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen, the canvas.
Yes, and this will take about fifteen minutes, I hope we can do that.
You said ten before.
She said ten, but now it's fifteen. It's gonna be twenty.
It's gonna be twenty for sure.
That's what I'm gonna remind you guys about that three minute hour. Hey Josh, are you ready?
I'm gonna, you, you guys want this time?
Probably the same. Yeah.
He's passed out.
He's left for lunch and coming back later.
Oh, man. Holy nature just called.
Oh, no, that's what happens when you're here till twelve thirty.
Justin, man. What's the longest working meeting you've ever had? How long did it go?
I don't know, because I was gonna say, we probably did one where you adjourned and came back too, that's what I was trying to think of.
Yeah, we don't think about it. Four hours would be pretty close.
The shortest, yeah, we never hit the shortest in Go Out Here Yet.
Yeah, the shortest is easier to track.
It is. That's what I, it was like seven minutes ago, yeah. Canvas always never. I think we just lucked out and had the canvassing and we're all just busy.
I thought we were done last week with Canvas.
I told you guys, this is the second one.
She did, she saved it, they saved it.
So there's three school districts where it works in two counties, so now you have to come back and certify the district as a whole. Each county get their own canvassing, now you get certified, so that's a whole.
Good thing you didn't have, I have to tell you. You didn't miss it. Put your explanations down. Okay, that's all we.
Thank you.
Yep.
So. So we're just.
This is going to be, so we're listening, so. I was having some problems with the, with the box for doing the county, so.
Don't get the same shit.
Lots of sheets.
Think I have the same shit.
So.
Okay, okay.
And then those abstracts that should follow.
Okay, do we have all the abstracts either or?
Well, this, this was for.
Do we have?
Better.
You've signed in one.
Got it.
Post canvas for our county.
Okay.
Uh, and then once we canvas, they'll pull back those ones and then we'll have you guys each.
The guys directed.
Got it, so we don't sign this.
No.
We're good.
Well, let's just get.
Done.
I think I should get off though. Right, I can get off.
Alright, so just reading two oh nine.
Yep.
And then comparing, so what do I do with this one?
Um, I think, I think you're filling out one.
Oh, I see.
Josh, I was supposed to sit here.
Okay.
So I'm gonna.
I just need two copies, maybe you have them on there.
Okay, so. And just reading Blackhawk numbers.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Uh, what was that, two oh nine, two oh nine, two, two eleven? And then two, two eleven.
Yep.
One thirty-six, one one thirty-seven.
One twenty, one thirty-eight.
Nine oh one, twelve, correct, twelve, two fourteen. Twenty-six, twenty-five, forty-three, twenty-six, sixty-eight.
I just found two, one, twenty-four, three.
Five, forty, six, five, forty-six.
Yep.
Forty-one, eighty-six, seventeen, twenty-two.
Yep. Nineteen, one.
Yep. Done.
Yes.
And then same race.
Four, four, forty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-four, seven, six.
Eleven, and my, do you want?
Six, twenty, seven, six, twenty-seven.
And then Union School District, one.
Eight, eight ninety-four, six.
Nine.
Nope.
Thirteen, eighty-six, fourteen.
Yep.
Three, thirty-two, six.
Well, that's much. Did you sign?
Nine, seven, three, twenty-eight, twenty-one.
Yep.
Three, plus, and two thirty-nine.
Multiple sign, yep. Now we sign.
What?
One, one.
I mean, I mean, oh, one for, one for.
Two thirty-nine.
Okay.
Thirty-seven, twenty-eight, sixty-one, thirty-sixty-five.
Okay.
And then the same race, um, Jennifer Lund had one, Reed Carlson had one.
Oh, yes, I can.
I had three write-ins and one from Reed Carlson.
So Jennifer Lund would have been in the scattering then, so two total.
Okay, a three total.
Yeah. And then we're missing a raise, Tana County.
Yes.
Reed Carlson had one twenty-five.
Yes.
And then probably some scattering, one seventy-two.
Correct.
Union School District just for two.
Yes.
Uh, Blackhawk, seventy-nine for a scattering of write-ins and then Amanda Shuffler, two ninety-three for three seventy-two.
Yes.
Um, Tana County, Amanda Shuffler has two and then just one for a scattering for three. Tana County, same race, twenty-seven for the scattering and one thirty for Amanda Shuffler, one fifty-seven.
Correct.
And then the, that next race for Blackhawk, um, Katie Schmidt got seven ninety-six, scattering twenty-two, eight, eighteen. And then Katie Schmidt, Katie Mitchell, team.
They don't know you've got.
Eight, eight, Katie, seven scattering for a couple of five. And then the public measure for Blackhawk was tied to, yes, four sixty-seven, no, ten forty-nine overall. You can't do this, ten, twenty-six. And then that.
It's like, oh dude, I gotta call them. Sure, I put that on my calendar to do today. I'll take you down to the bathroom. Isn't he tall?
He's a dog.
He's not, he's not bad. No, but he's tall and bad.
I'm seeing that.
Usually, anytime you fall, you're gonna be better.
Oh, and then, yeah, but they kind of, you don't stick down anywhere.
Oh, no, come on.
Oh, you.
Careful, we're recording, we're recording.
That's what I.
Drop the audio, watch this.
No, drop it, when not tell dollars, it's long, till never.
Wait till the red tea. Yeah, I've seen her.
Yeah.
It's gonna all go down the red sheet.
We haven't cleared this yet.
Oh, you gotta save it too.
We're waiting.
We're waiting, we're not cleared yet. Are we sent off to the one that we're doing it?
That's more response.
After we tell, tell the people, I take it.
What's in there?
It's all gone if it was, it's like not to worry. Oh, it's only rich, sorry.
Another one.
One.
Tana, one eighty-one, two forty-four, six twenty-five.
Yes. Sign.
Just one?
Yeah, there's one. I just have the certificates.
What is it?
I just have the certificates and I see that we will also, but I thought it's on the same.
Um, thirteen.
Yeah. So you have, you have all these certificates and then you have, you have bumper land and then Union and then you have the bumper land.
More responsive.
What am I missing? What am I missing, yeah, I see that, but it's like, that's pretty, I say, here, you're ready to say, well, this is you. Don't give it back to me.
Yep, same one. I got my signature.
Yeah, this one, this one's. Trying to get rid of, I'm like outside and we're not, that's just not high.
And then that they are on site.
I got the definitely, I'm happy with that. Yes.
And then there's the, that was twenty. Hmm? You're gonna do on motion in a second for the resolution for the canvas?
Entertainer motion in a second to, what we do?
Certify.
Certify the election.
Yep.
So moved.
Wrong right here.
Second.
Second. Certify the.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed your, uh, the resolution or the motion?
It's a, oh.
Roll call please.
Yeah, it's a resolution. Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Rittenbach.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Move to adjourn. Second. It's only three hours and forty-seven minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.